Call this evening's meeting to order for the Bristol Tennessee City Council Meeting of September 5th, 2017. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Here.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
All right, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated, and there are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter council chambers for those individuals designed to address city council tonight. Now, I would like to ask Chad Keen if he would lead us in our prayer, and Margaret Farrobin if she would lead in her pledge, if you'd stand with us.
Father, as we pause to give thanks and pray for others, we ask that you look upon those in the Texas area as they are continually putting their lives back together. Those relief workers that are coming from our area and other areas of the country, we ask that you watch over them and keep them safe. Father, we now see another storm headed towards our shores. We ask that you keep those, keep us safe, watch over those that are in harm's way. Father, as we make decisions tonight and throughout our meetings, we ask that you give us guidance, that you tell us in some way or fashion of the direction that's your will for this city to go. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sora, do we have any agenda item additions tonight?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
Alright, thank you. So on to the proclamations and recognitions. First, we have a joint proclamation from Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee, designating the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2017 as Buckle Up For Life Child Safety Seat Week. I'd like, I'm gonna read this one tonight, and Mr. Samuel Jones, Child Passenger Safety Program Coordinator with Bristol's Promise, is with us this evening to accept the proclamation. Proclamation designating September 17th through 23rd, 2017, as Buckle Up For Life Child Safety Seat Week. Whereas children are our future, and it is responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas traffic crashes are the leading cause of death for children aged 1 to 13, and whereas research has shown that car seats reduce the risk of fatal injury for infants by 71 percent and by 54 percent for toddlers in cars, and by 58 percent and 59 percent for infants and toddlers in SUVs, pickups, and vans, and whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged 12 and under, always riding the backseat, buckled up, properly installed child safety seats, and a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, and whereas the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee are committed to working closely with our partners and safety advocates such as Buckle Up For Life to help make the kind of choices that will keep children alive and safe. Whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Now therefore, we, the mayors of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 2013, 2017, let me start that again, proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2017, as child passenger safety week. I encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time, this fifth day of September, 2017. Thank you.
As you, thank you Mayor Young and council members. As you may or may not know, child passenger safety is an important topic because it affects the children. Research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital shows that in the U.S. only 1 in 4 child car seats are properly installed. Adding to the tragedy of this stat is the fact that many of these injuries and deaths are avoidable with the use of proper restraints like child car seats, booster seats, and seat belts. During Child Passenger Safety Week, I encourage parents and caregivers to visit checking stations and have their seats checked. Parents by doing this can help avoid the tragedy that an improperly installed car seat can cause. In the end, I encourage everyone to set an example for children and use their seat belt. Remember children, follow by example.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I can just take a second, Samuel's just back from the national conference, and he successfully wrote a grant funded for $10,000, which brings a lot of car seats into our community, as well as car seat checks and training. So, really appreciate the work that he does.
Thank you.
Certainly. Next, we would like to recognize Sergeant Matt Cousins of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department for his selection as the 2017 Officer of the Year by the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police. Sergeant Cousins was instrumental in the recognition and subsequent stopping of an active shooter threat in this community July 7th, 2016. I would like to ask Chief Wade and Sergeant Cousins to come to the podium for remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. On July the 7th last year at about 2:00 a.m., which is just a few hours before the Dallas shooting, the ambush of five police officers that were ambushed, we had a similar situation unfolding here in Bristol. Our officers were dispatched to report shots fired near the Days Inn on Bonner Parkway. Our 911 center received multiple calls from this area, and as officers were en route, the clerk from the Days Inn called 911 to advise that she had been shot multiple times. Sergeant Matt Cousins was the second officer of three to arrive on scene. As he and another officer began making their way to the clerk in the hotel lobby, Sergeant Cousins recognized that he was walking among several rounds of expanded 223 casings, brass rifle casings. Sergeant Cousins is a K-9 officer, and his patrol rifle is stored in the trunk of his cruiser. Recognizing the situation was very serious and that he and other officers were facing an assailant who was most likely armed with a long gun, Cousins returned his vehicle to retrieve his patrol rifle from the trunk. As he was doing this, he alerted the other officers on scene to the seriousness of the situation, as well as the other responding officers by broadcasting this information via the police radio. At this point, Sergeant Cousins saw the shooter emerge from behind a nearby auto parts store. Rakim Scott was ambushing the officers from behind. Scott was armed with a pistol and an AR-15 rifle. Cousins immediately began giving Scott commands to drop the weapon, which Scott ignored, and ultimately opened fire on the officers. All three officers returned fire, striking Scott, causing him to fall to the ground. Even after being on the ground, Scott continued to fire his rifle at the officers. The video from the patrol car cameras of this incident is very chilling. It shows Sergeant Cousins advancing toward the ambusher during an intense gun battle. When the incident finally ended, Sergeant Cousins had suffered a minor gunshot wound to his leg. The clerk of the Days Inn was also taken to the hospital for multiple gunshot wounds. Also, we learned that Scott had stood along the highway, the four-lane highway on Bonner Parkway, and fired numerous rounds from his rifle at passing cars. One of these rounds struck Jennifer Rooney, our local newspaper carrier, and killed her. Scott had also shot through the window of a second vehicle, injuring that driver. After his arrest, Scott was interviewed by agents from the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation. During this interview, Scott told the agents about ambushing the responding officers that night. After shooting the previous victims, he had walked to the rear of the adjacent building. When the officers arrived, not knowing where the shooter might be, they parked away from the hotel. Unfortunately, this put them in front of the very building Scott was concealed behind. This enabled him to come up from behind. Scott described himself as being enraged and was racially motivated. He told the TBI he wanted to hurt the officers who were present. We believe that had Scott been able to eliminate the threat posed to him by the officers, he would have continued on his path of murder and destruction. He was armed with two firearms, as well as a multiple loaded magazines for both. He was wearing a tactical vest which contained extra magazines and a large knife. I believe all three officers involved in this incident acted heroically without thought to their own safety, and all three have been recognized by our department for their actions that night. However, Sergeant Cousins' actions that night included the recognition of the expended ammunition brass, alerting the other officers of the presence, and Sergeant Cousins' decision to advance on the ambushing shooter rather than retreat, which allowed the officers to stop the threat, not just to them but the community as well. In my opinion, this shooter would have kept killing other innocent people had not been for Sergeant Cousins' actions.
Mayor Young, city council members, thank you for your recognition. It's a pleasure to serve the citizens and visitors of Bristol, Tennessee. I'd like to thank Chief Wade for his support, leadership, and also for the TACP Officer of the Year nomination. I'm honored and humbled to receive the award, especially of this caliber. Even though this was an individual award, July 7th, 2016 was not an individual effort. On that morning, a disturbed individual threw members of the police department into a very unfortunate situation. Thankfully, our teamwork and our training allowed us to stop a person who was focused on a fit of rage. Officer Cowan and Officer Forbes did not hesitate to act, and they moved in concert to stop, help the threat. Sergeant Crowe and Officer Griffin quickly responded to the Days Inn to render aid to employee Deborah Watts. They were able to quickly secure the scene and allow a fire department to enter that scene and begin treatment on Ms. Watts. While responding to the scene, Officer Matt Johnson's alertness located Jennifer Rooney's vehicle off the roadway in a parking lot. Officer Johnson and Officer Kazee were able to ensure the scene was secured and safe for our fire department. Officer Oldwood had recently went home, scheduled early to go home on that shift. He heard what happened without question or direction. He returned back to work on his own. Bristol, Virginia Police Department officers were on State Street. They heard an ensuing gun battle, and within minutes, the officers responded to the scene and helped secure the crime scene at the Days Inn. Solomon County Sheriff Officer Deputis heard about the incident and quickly sent deputies to offer assistance. We are fortunate to have such a great working relationship with the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department, the Bristol, Virginia Police Department, and the Solomon County Sheriff's Office. If there was anything I could change about that morning, it would be the ability to stop the animal before he injured Deborah Watts and before he took the life of Jennifer Rooney. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, it's hard to follow that. Thank you. Lastly, we would formally like to recognize our fire department in their recent accreditation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. This is a significant accomplishment in the fire service profession. Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department is only the fifth department in the state of Tennessee to obtain this designation. I would like to ask Chief Barnes and Captain David McGlamery, accreditation manager, and Battalion Chief Alan Howard, assistant accreditation manager, to come forward for recognition.
Thank you, Mayor Young, thank you, city council. You don't achieve something like this, which is very noteworthy for the fire department unless you have an excellent team. And I might be a little prejudiced, but I think we've got the greatest group of guys and gals of any department in the country. They all came together, they worked hard, they kept their eye on the prize, and they really accomplished something that they can be proud of. But I think not only they should be proud of it, but everyone in Bristol should be proud of it. We talk about our branding, Bristol is, I think with the police department that's accredited, the fire department is accredited, all the other work that the other departments do for public safety, then Bristol is public safety. I also have to say that we wouldn't even be discussing accreditation tonight if it were not for the support of city council. A project like this just can't be done because a bunch of guys in the fire department want to prove how good they are, or how good we operate. You have to have the support of city council, and we appreciate that. Also, it begins with the city manager, and city manager, Mr. Bill Sora, has been excellent throughout this entire process. He's always been there to help, and we couldn't ask for more support from him, and we appreciate you too. We also have to show appreciation to the guys and gals in the department. You know, they all rose to the occasion, they all worked together as a team. But when you have 60-some people working together toward one project, you have to have strong leadership. I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about these two guys behind me, the accreditation manager, the assistant accreditation manager. They kept everyone focused, they kept us in line, we got everything done we needed to do, we met the timelines, and they put in countless number of hours, and you can't do it without good leadership. So if they want to say a few words, then they're welcome to do so, but I just want to thank city council, city manager Sora, one more time. Thank you very much.
Before we move into presentations, I'm adding one proclamation that we shared last week at Bristol, Tennessee's, at Tennessee High's auditorium, and that is in regards to the International Overdose Awareness Day that was recognized for August 31st. And I'm gonna read that, and part of why I want to is I want to raise the awareness level of what it is and share some of that perspective. So this was a mayoral proclamation, whereas since 2001, International Overdose Awareness Day has been recognized on August 31st in communities around the world to remember those who have been injured or who have died due to substance abuse by overdose, to identify the risk of overdose, and to reduce the stigma of substance use and addiction in family and community life. And whereas each year, more Americans die from drug overdoses than in traffic accidents, and more than 3 out of 5 deaths involve an opioid. The number of overdose deaths involving opioids, including prescription opioid pain relievers, heroin, fentanyl, has nearly quadrupled. And whereas many people who die from an overdose struggle with an opioid use disorder or other substance use disorder, and unfortunately misconceptions around these disorders have contributed to harmful stigmas that prevent individuals from seeking evidence-based treatment. Whereas substance use overdose deaths are increasing in alarming numbers in Tennessee and the nation, and families, loved ones, and community can be left feeling devastated, yet motivated to improve the support and health services, and feeling respected with restored dignity and inclusion in family and community. Whereas international overdose awareness can help bring solidarity and education in our community that can help make a difference to improve awareness for hard reduction of overdose death prevention and reducing the stigma of substance use addiction in family and community life services. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jack Young, Mayor of Bristol, do hereby designate Thursday, August 31st, 2017 as International Overdose Awareness Day. So, one last one, I know it wasn't on our agenda, but just wanted to raise the awareness of what that's about. And next, we are on to presentations. So, Ms. Sheriff Marshall, Senior Planner, is with us this evening to present the winner of this year's Neighborhood Grant Program.
Thank you, Mayor Young, council members. I'm excited tonight to be here to present the results of the 2017 Neighborhood Grant Application Process. The grant application is now in its second year, and the goal of the program is to provide opportunities for citizens to partner with the city to implement neighborhood enhancements that improve neighborhood identity, build community pride, and benefit the public at large. The grant award is in the amount of $5,000, and this is something that reoccurs each year. You may remember the 2016 grant award went to the Middlebrook Neighborhood, and we had Lee Hoffnung here a couple of months ago to present the work that they did at their entry island. So that was the first year of the grant award, and now we're on to a second year where we had two applications submitted, one by the Junior League of Bristol, Virginia, Tennessee to construct five Little Free Libraries, one at each elementary school in the city of Bristol, and a second application from the Middlebrook Neighborhood for the beautification and remediation of their lake, the Middlebrook Lake. So these applications were scored according to a criteria, and that criteria included project goals and objectives, the need for the project, the public benefit and overall impact, their maintenance plan, neighborhood support presented, and their ability to adhere to a planning timeline. The high score of the grant review was the Junior League of Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia. And again, they were applying to construct a Little Free Library at each of the elementary schools here in town. They're no stranger to the Little Free Library Project. They have, I believe, six in Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee, one here in front of the Slater Center. So what they had applied to do was construct each of these, and this is in partnership with Troop 3 of the Boy Scouts. So the grant would fund the materials, but the Boy Scout troop has agreed to provide the labor to construct each library. They'll also, the grant funds will also pay for registration and charter signs for each library, new books, a bookmark for all schoolchildren, and decals for the sides of each library, and then a reading bench for each location. So with that, the staff recommendation is to award the 2017 Neighborhood Grant to the Junior League of Bristol, Virginia, Tennessee. And we're fortunate to have with us tonight Angela Wolf, who is the Junior League member and chair of the Little Free Library Committee. Also, we have with us Brian and Tyler Johnson. Mr. Johnson is the troop scout master, and his son Tyler Johnson is a scout member that would be- would be helping with the construction of these libraries. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would like to thank you for your support of the Junior League and of our Little Free Library Program. It is an excellent opportunity to raise literacy among our schoolchildren, and this will provide new libraries at each elementary school in the area. So it's a very worthwhile cause. Thank you very much.
Brian, do you all want to explain that it's an Eagle Scout project, too?
I guess I could, real briefly. So I'm Brian Johnson, I'm the Scout Master of Troop Three, and this is my son Tyler Johnson, and he's going to be using this project as his Eagle Scout project. And giving back to, giving back to the community is a big part of the Boy Scouts, and so we appreciate this opportunity to help with this service project. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have one more presentation tonight from Dr. Gary Lilly, Director of Schools. He's with us this evening to provide an update on the Advanced Placement Program at Tennessee High School. And the testing for this program is a shared funding effort of Bristol, Tennessee City Schools, the Industrial Development Board, and the City of Bristol. Dr. Lilly?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you about our Advanced Placement Program this evening, and I actually want to take the opportunity to introduce our brand-new Tennessee High School Principal, Mrs. Kim Kirk.
Hi, good evening. I'm truly humbled and very excited to have been given the opportunity to be the Principal of Tennessee High School. Graduated several years ago, worked outside of the system for quite a while, had some great opportunities and experiences, but there's nothing like being back in Bristol, and I'm very excited and look forward to working with each of you.
So the state calls Advanced Placement a EPO, an Early Post-Secondary Opportunity. And so they, the State Department really started promoting EPOS in conjunction with the Tennessee Promise Program. But of course, we've been offering Advanced Placement classes for years and years. The Department says that there are several advantages to EPOS, mostly to help prepare students for full college and career, but specifically to earn post-secondary credits while still in high school, become familiar with post-secondary expectations, develop confidence and skills for success in post-secondary, make informed post-secondary and career decisions, and decrease the time and cost of completing a certificate or degree. Other EPOS that they promote include dual enrollment, dual credit, and industry certifications, and we offer all of those opportunities as well. But tonight, we're going to really focus on Advanced Placement. Now, I don't have to tell any of you that preparing students to be college and career-ready is an important part of economic development. And to assist in that effort, several years ago, you all agreed to help us increase our Advanced Placement participation rate and outcomes. So for the 2012-13 school year, our Board of Education changed the policy regarding AP credit, and they said if you don't take the AP exam, then you don't get AP credit. You'll still get credit, just not Advanced Placement credit. So with that change, we fell obligated to pay for the test. There is a fee for that. In fact, it's $94 for a test, or if a student qualifies for free or reduced lunch prices, then it's $32 for the test. So you guys, the City Council, the Industrial Development Board, and the Board of Education partnered to provide those tests at no cost for our students. So we agreed at that time to give it a try for several years, and then take a look at it and see if we were being successful or making a difference. So before we get to our specific results, let me talk just a little bit about the benefits of Advanced Placement. For one thing, they boost the GPA of students, and that's because AP carries higher points than other classes. They also help students earn college credit while in high school, and that leads to the next one. If they earn college credit in high school, that saves them money and their parents' money later in college. It also helps our students stand out in the admissions process. Selective colleges typically look at transcripts to see if students have taken any Advanced Placement courses, or how many they've taken. And ultimately, it just helps prepare our students better for those post-secondary experiences, it improves their study habits, their writing skills, it sharpens their problem-solving Now, you hear a lot about rigor, and when something is rigorous, it means it's hard. And our Advanced Placement classes are tough. They are college-level classes. And so it is great that our students have the opportunity to be exposed to that level of rigor while in high school. And our students' performance on those exams, those are nationally-normed exams, so our students are really being compared to their peers across the nation. Research says that students who take Advanced Placement classes are more likely to succeed in college. So let's look real quickly at that research. Now, while AP classes alone do not strictly cause success, it is definitely an indicator of success. So what you're looking at here are different groups of students that are matched based on socioeconomic status variables, eighth grade in high school GPAs, SAT and ACT scores. And really, what you can get out of this is that students who take Advanced Placement courses just simply have a higher rate of graduating college, of finishing college. So students who take no AP courses do not have a, do not have a great percentage rate of completion. Students who take AP courses, who don't even take the exam, have a much better rate of completing college. Students who take the exam, even if they score a one or two on the exam, have a better rate still of completing college. And those students who take AP courses, take the AP exam and score three, four, or five on the exam, they blow all the other categories out of the water. This slide shows that AP can be a significant indicator of subject interest. Maybe your own children at one time or another has said, "Mom, Dad, how am I ever going to use this in the future?" When talking about some coursework. Well, students who take AP exams are much more likely to take a major in a similar subject in college, and that correlation is particularly strong for science, technology, engineering, and math, the STEM subjects. So now, let's take a look at our own results. I know this is a little bit hard to see. The blue bars up here are the number of students taking Advanced Placement courses. The red bars are the number of students taking AP exams, or the number of AP exams that were taken. Now, in the middle, you can see the break there. This has quite a bit of historical data. It goes on the far left, that's 2008-9 school year, on the far right, that's this past school year. In the middle is when our partnership began, which is in 2012 and 13. So the year before that changed. The year before we struck up this partnership, we had 257 students who took AP classes. Of those students, 23 took a total of 32 exams, because some students were taking more than one exam. Last year, we had 363 students who took AP classes. Of those students, 212 took a total of 326 exams. So as you can see, that is a huge increase, and with your help, I think we are actually changing the culture of education within our community, so that our community has higher expectations of their own children and other children going through our school system, and that's a, that's a great thing. So mostly, I'm here to thank you for your partnership. You are definitely helping our students and their families. Our students who take AP classes are going to have a more successful future. It's good for our community, and it definitely promotes economic development. Miss Kirk, you're going to?
We look forward to working with you and exploring post-secondary opportunities, and we realize the benefits of our Advanced Placement Program. And like I said, look forward to working with you. Anything that you need from us, just let us know, and we'll reach out to you if we need you.
Thank you.
On to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening on the agenda, and this public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 17-4, establishing a property tax rate for fiscal year July 1/17 through June 30/18. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter for public?
May I be glad to, later in your agenda this evening, you'll be considering on second reading ordinance 17-4, which establishes a property tax rate for fiscal 2018. As council is aware, Tennessee statutes require for real and personal property to be valued, or be revalued for property tax purposes at least every six years. Property taxes are the largest single source of revenue for local governments. The calendar year 2017 is the reappraisal year for property located in the Solomon County. In July, staff received the calculation form for the certified tax rate from the Tennessee Board of Equalization. The reappraisal determined the city to have a total tax base of $703,117,359. This yielded a certified property tax rate of $2.16. The current property tax rate for the city of Bristol is $2.25. Due to the timing of the reappraisal and the resulting certified tax rate, property tax rate was not included in the fiscal 2018 budget and appropriation ordinance, as is typically our practice during non-reappraisal years. The city council had a work session on July 25th, and had several subsequent work sessions to address this issue. During the July 25th work session, it was suggested that the property tax rate remain at $2.25, and that's what this body considered on first reading on August 1st. The holding the rate at $2.25 assists in addressing the incremental loss of hog income tax, which is scheduled to phase out by 2022, and also addresses tax increment financing, which is, was not addressed in the certified tax rate. In addition, since those meetings, we've also learned of potential funding needs through maintenance of effort requirements of our school system. So the, as it is stated in the first reading of 17-4, of ordinance 17-4, it reflects no change in the property tax rate from the current rate of $2.25. And the property tax has remained such since September of 2013. Historically, it's been the city's practice to hold the property tax rate unchanged until the next countywide appraisal. The next countywide appraisal would be in the year 2021.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address before making your comments. And I know we do have one person to sign the sign-in sheet. If you'd like to speak now, you may, if this is a topic. Okay. All right. Seeing none, let's see. This public hearing is hereby closed, and next on our agenda is Appearance of Citizens. This section provides opportunity for the public to address City Council on matters that are not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time, since in most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concerns. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to City Council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual, and groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have Mr. Vance on our Appearance of Citizens, if he would like to come forward, and any others who have not signed the list are still welcome to line up behind him if you choose.
Mayor, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. And first of all, let me say this, cut me off at three minutes, because I don't know what three minutes is.
We've got somebody down here with a timer. Can you state your name?
Mark Vance, 201 Blue Ridge Drive, Bristol, Tennessee.
Also our county, one of our county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I know that the topic that I have on my mind tonight to talk as a citizen is that the hype and the comments in the news media, the social media, about the commission of the county commission, the things that we were challenged with this year in this budget, which you all are also seeing challenges in your budget as well. My comments are going to be directed to the fact of, I'm going to go back over the last 11 years, or three years. The last three years, the city and the counties worked tremendously on several large ticket items. The first item, in 2014, the county commission agreed to issue bonds for $11 million to replace a public safety radio system. At that time, that was my first commission meeting, and there was an opportunity that time to help city even more, to where the county actually bought the radios consoles that's used in the 911 center. So that was like a $307,000 windfall. I truly recognize the importance of being a county commissioner, because I am the second longest-serving elected official in this county, that my job is very important to make sure in Blountville that the taxpayers are represented, and the decisions that are being made are in the best interest of the people that I represent. With you all as city council, I feel that's my responsibility to make sure that I am the leader for you all in Blountville. Since then, we've also issued bonds of $140 million, which in turn, $27 million comes to Vance Middle School. Well, last night, I was laying there, and I was thinking about 2004, Ed Dupuy and I talked about Vance Middle School when my children, my house and law, was going through Vance, and I thought, man, we really need to replace the Vance Middle School. So this has been an agenda item for the city for many years. So three years ago, when the county was faced with a countywide school plan, there was a lot of negotiation, debate, and discussion, and as most of you all attended the county commission meeting, they're very diversified. There's people from all over the county, has different interests, have different representation. And so it's a struggle to sometimes to get something to come to a final fruitation, and that was that $140 million bond that the county issued. At that same time, three years ago, when the taxes were raised, and as you all are being faced raised taxes, and you're dealing in the eyes of the public.
If you would finish up your thought.
Okay. I just want, I just want to tell you. So anyway, the taxes was raised ultimately to have money sitting there to pay for these schools. We have done a lot. The county commission and the city council has done a tremendous job in the last three years to getting where we're at. The decision that we had to make about pulling the renovation funds, as you knew, is not required by law to even to share those funds. That has been a struggle that I've had for three years not to do this before now. But let me just say this in closing. Where we have progressed over the last three years, and the things that the county has done with the city is historical. What I want to continue to do is to move forward, not allow this bump in the road is to cause problems for us in the future. We have to continue to go on beyond this. Now, I had a conversation, I need to say this, and excuse me about three minutes. I had that conversation today with Larry Bailey and Richard Venable. Now, we understand the concern of our school system with what Dan Elders did in Washington County. They raised taxes .31 and didn't share that money with the cities. I can give you a commitment right now, that is not the intent of Solomon County, and that will not occur if I decide to run for county commission again. We're going to continue to work strong for our education system and to join county and city relationships of being continued progressive as we have in the last three years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six minutes.
I see another coming for Appearance of Citizens.
Thank you. I'd not planned to say a word tonight. Jill Harrison, 204 Curacao Road, Bristol, Tennessee. I just wanted to say thank you, because I felt at the August 31st hearing that we attended for the Solomon County Commissioners, we had the support of City Council behind the school board. I understand with Commissioner Vance, you have to do what you have to do. I understand with Commissioner Vance, you have to do what you have to do, and I felt like city council did your job in appearing and being there and supporting the school system. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Last call for appearance of citizens. Seeing none, move on to appointments. We have several appointments to be made to boards and commissions this evening. First, we'll consider appointment to the Bristol Housing Board. This appointment will fill an unexpired term of office ending March 31st, 2021. The candidates are David Baldwin and James Graham. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of these candidates? Please mark your ballots and pass them to the city manager.
I'd just like to say on behalf of all the candidates we have tonight, including the ten people who applied for school board, but particularly the last couple of years, the caliber of people stepping up and volunteering for our boards is just very, very impressive. But it does make for hard decisions, and I know most of all these people, and Dave Baldwin, Jim Graham, each of them would make great selection, and it's difficult to decide. They bring different skills to the table. It wasn't real helpful.
I know both of these gentlemen, and this time, I'm giving my support to Mr. Graham, but as soon as Mr. Baldwin steps off in his current full-time role, I'd love to be able to select him as one of our next commissioners.
Council McKean votes for David Baldwin. Mayor Young votes for James Graham. Councilwoman Running votes for James Graham. Vice Mayor Farrobin votes for David Baldwin. And Councilwoman Powers votes for James Graham. James Graham has the prerequisite three votes.
Thank you. Next, we will consider an appointment to the Emergency Communications District Board. The appointment will fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2021. The candidate is Harry Miller, Jr. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? If not, please mark your ballots and pass them to the city manager.
Council McKean votes for Harry Miller. Councilwoman Powers votes for Harry Miller. Mayor Young votes for Harry Miller. Councilwoman Running votes for Harry Miller. And Vice Mayor Farrobin votes for Harry Miller.
All right. Next, we will consider appointment to the Industrial Development Board. The appointment will fill an unexpired term of office ending August 31st, 2022. The candidates are Dirk Crandall and Logan McCabe. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates? Please mark your ballots and pass them to the city manager.
Another difficult decision.
Both really good candidates, and would serve the Industrial Development Board real
Council McKean votes for Dirk Crandall. Mayor Young votes for Logan McCabe. Councilwoman Running votes for Logan McCabe. Vice Mayor Farrobin votes for Dirk Crandall. And Councilwoman Powers votes for Dirk Crandall. Dirk Crandall has the prerequisite three votes.
Next, we will consider appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. The appointment will be for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020. The candidate is James Malin Luttrell. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I've known Malin a long time, and known his children, and he is the leader at Bristol Baseball, and anyone knows anything about parks and recreation, I would think that Malin would.
And he's usually here.
Council McKean votes for Malin Luttrell. Councilwoman Powers votes for Malin Luttrell. Mayor Young votes for Malin Luttrell. Councilwoman Running votes for Mayor Luttrell. And Vice Mayor Farrobin votes for Malin Luttrell.
All right. We have one appointment this evening to Tree Board. The term of appointment is for a period of four years ending June 30th, 2021. The candidate is Mary Lou Sprouls. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I can say she's a master gardener, and she has served on the Tree Board, and she did not put her name in last month because she wanted to allow for anyone else to have the opportunity, but she's very enthusiastic.
Council McKean votes for Mary Lou Sprouls. Mayor Young votes for Mary Lou Sprouls. Councilwoman Running votes for Mayor Lou Sprouls. Vice Mayor Farrobin votes for Mary Lou Sprouls. And Councilwoman Powers votes for Mary Lou Sprouls.
All right. And lastly, we have an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Board of Education. This appointment will fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2019. The candidates are Derek Linkus and Laura Ong. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
I want to just again thank the, we had ten applicants. Any one of them would do a good job. We had two in common and chose to interview two. They both did great with their interviews, and either one would do well. So, look forward to working with the members appointed.
Council McKean votes for Derek Linkus. Councilwoman Running votes for Derek Linkus. Vice Mayor Farrobin votes for Laura Ong. Mayor Young votes for Derek Linkus. And Councilwoman Powers votes for Laura Ong. Derek Linkus has the prerequisite three votes for appointment.
Thank you, thank you, those who have applied and those who will be serving. We do occasionally have vacancies, as was mentioned with the Tree Board, and I encourage our citizens who are both here, as well as those watching in, to take the opportunity to get involved in one of those boards and be able to make a difference through your volunteer involvement in adding value to the city of Bristol. Now, under ordinances and resolutions tonight, we have one ordinance on our agenda for consideration on first reading, and that is ordinance seventeen-five, amending chapter fifty-four of the Code of Ordinances relating to the composition of Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize ordinance seventeen-five?
Yes, may I be glad to. This item initially came up during our July 25th work session. This is, council is aware, this is typically a work session where council appoints the internal, makes the internal appointments to the various boards and commissions in which you will serve for the following year. Ordinance seventeen-five amends the Parks and Recreation Commission membership to allow for additional representation. Its current membership is comprised of nine members appointed at large and one student member. Ordinance seventeen-five expands this to a total of twelve individuals, nine are appointed at large for staggering three-year terms. A tenth member will be appointed from city council. City council does not currently have representation on the board. City council would appoint a member from amongst themselves annually to serve for that term. In addition, there will be an additional student member. The student members will be appointed as rising juniors. They will be appointed for a two-year term, and their term will commence in June prior to their junior year. If, I'm sorry?
We're not staggering them, so that there's one senior member and one junior?
No, you would, and we already have one that's serving now, so if you make then another appointment, then that will do that.
Perfect. Sorry.
Okay. If approved on first reading, you'll consider this matter on second reading then at the October 3rd meeting. It will become effective seventeen days, as our ordinance are, after that. So, appointments could be made at our November meeting.
Any further questions for staff on this matter? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Question.
Second.
Any member of council like to discuss ordinance seventeen-five?
I'm thrilled to add this second student member. I think that helps to have some continuity, might encourage even greater participation when there's two of them, two young people there, so I'm thrilled with that part of it, and also if council wants to serve, that's also great to have that opportunity.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? All right. I believe we're ready for the question. Tara, please call the vote.
Council McKean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Running?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Yes.
All right. Second reading, adoption of ordinances. The next item on our agenda is second reading of ordinance seventeen-four, establishing the property tax rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30th, 2018. Mr. Sora summarized this issue during public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have a question for staff? I don't hear a question, but we have met several times on this, and I know we even had a midday meeting on this matter earlier, so I know we've been through quite a lot to discuss there. All right. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Make the motion that we, as we did in first reading, that we retain a tax rate of 2.25.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance seventeen-five?
I think it's very important that we, as a council, do what the calculation form for the certified tax rate is intended, and that's if there's full disclosure on the part of the city council as to what the certified tax rate actually means. The certified tax rate came back from the state at 2.16. There are several questions to be asked as to how it could come back at a lesser rate than the 2.25 that we've had since 2013. In talking with the comptroller's office and with the Department of Equalization, it was affirmed and confirmed, as we had had our own discussions, that the tax rate is at the lesser, the certified tax rate is at the lesser amount due to our TIF obligations. Now, TIF properties, it's not an especially complicated process, but a lot of times people are not really clear on what exactly a TIF does. A TIF, when we go into trying to incentivize development in our community, oftentimes a TIF will be put into place, and that's an acronym for tax increment financing. And what that actually does is it could take a piece of property that was valued at that point with no development, let's say at $32,000. That will be the property tax rate on that piece of property until the TIF, the tax increment financing, is fulfilled. And TIFs can have any range of life from ten, fifteen, to twenty years. So, we have, in trying to encourage growth in our area, have had properties that have received a TIF. In our discussion with the comptroller's office and with our county assessor's office, it was made clear that what we had in front of us as far as the certified tax rate was actually a false positive. It looked like we had this excess of revenues coming in that would reduce our tax rate, when in actuality, the revenues that were assigned to us as being generated were then going to be passed on to the developers that had received the TIFs or their financial institution to cover that financing. So, while it looks like we, through the certified tax rate, would have a lesser tax rate with additional revenues, in fact, we don't. To stay at 2.25 keeps us not even revenue neutral the whole way through the next four years. In years three and four, we still see a negative, we're revenue negative rather than revenue neutral. That's the first part. The second part of this is where are we in those taxable parcels of property? We know that in Bristol, Tennessee, we have 13,578 total taxable parcels, and this information has come through our county property assessor. We know that out of those 13,578, we had 7,079 that saw a minimal, if at all, increase, very marginal, and that as far as decreases go, we had 3,493 properties that actually decreased. So, in speaking with some of our developers who had non-TIFed properties, as to where their property tax, their reappraisal fell, oftentimes it was that they had seen little to no increase in their reappraisal value, thus meaning that if we retained the property tax rate at 2.25, there would be little to no additional taxes to be received or to be incurred. We've gone, we have gone all over, round the park on this. We have done our due diligence. You know, when you're an elected official, people are so quick to say, I don't want my taxes raised. Well, let me say this, I don't want my taxes raised. But we have forward momentum right now in our community. TIFs are not free. A lot of times people think, oh, well, TIFs are free. They're not free. You know, we have to, we have to keep the bow level in the water moving forward for the next four years with our revenues that are generated and come to us. Some say, well, the TIFs aren't worth it. Why are we having TIFs placed on anything? You know, because we're not realizing it in the return of, in our tax rate. If we did not TIF different projects and incentivize the projects, they would never happen. So, that $32,000 piece of property that I spoke of to begin with, it would still be a $32,000 piece of property. Now, when the TIF rolls off of that $32,000 assessed value piece of property, today, that piece of property, its assessed value is 900, and Tara, you may have to tell me, $960-some-thousand dollars, less than $58,000 that we use to service the TIF, and the $32,000 on that piece of property. So, the property has increased in value, but we, those dollars, the differential in those dollars do not come back to us at real dollars. They will once the TIF is satisfied. The difference in those monies is what I said earlier, is it's going back to the developer or to their financial institution. So, some say, well, you know, why put a TIF on it at all? Well, off of that piece of property, we have seen a growth of over 900 jobs. 900 jobs that we didn't have before, that's 900 different individuals, or maybe they're working multiple jobs. I don't have that data, but that's 900 jobs that are supporting themselves or helping to support their family and that are generating disposable income in the form of sales tax. Sales tax that's been put back into our system that we did not have prior to what was built through the TIF. So, it's a complicated issue. I get that, and in speaking with the comptroller's office today, they made it very clear that what I've explained this evening is in fact correct, that it is a false positive. You could also say that it's a non-taxable growth. Taxes are collected, we are given credit for those taxes, but those taxes do not remain within the city coffers. They are automatically returned to the developer or to their financial institution, which is why I think that we need to look at the return on our investment, which is substantial and will be even more so, and when the TIF is complete, then we will draw the full value of that piece of property, which now sits at right around $960,000, but will only increase. which now sits at right around nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but will only increase as more and more is developed. So, you know, we have to be patient. We have to be understanding. If a person's property value did increase by a hundred thousand dollars, no one's, as far as their personal, I mean, you know, and the reason that it would increase to that magnitude is that the property owner decided to make improvements on their own, which of course would add to his property value. There may have been something within that area, maybe new roads, streets, sidewalks, curbing, that would have added to the property value. But on a hundred thousand dollars of new reappraised value, if that were to have taken place, it would mean about twenty-two dollars a year in an increase, which would calculate out to about a dollar seventy-five a month. So I don't like taxes. I don't like voting for taxes. I don't, that's not, not who I am. I'm a fiscal conservative, you know, but I think being a fiscal conservative, I think sometimes we have to redefine that. Being a fiscal conservative is not having a rubber stamp and saying, "No, no, I don't care what it means. I'm good with it the way it is. I'm gonna vote no." That's not fiscal conservative. I'd like to think we're more intelligent than that. A true fiscal conservative collects all the data, does their due diligence, synthesizes it down to its very base, and then makes a decision. And for us to make a decision to go with a tax rate at two sixteen is automatically going to cause us to be in a deficit. Now, you want to talk about the bond rating? We have an outstanding bond rating right now. But if we pull on our reserve fund for anything other than capital improvement or projects, if we pull on it for operational expenses at all, we run the risk of throwing flags at the bond rating institutions. And we don't want to do that either, because we've still got bonds that need to be issued. And we want them issued at the lowest possible bond rate that they can be issued. So if we are functioning at a deficit, if we are having to pull on the reserve fund for anything operational, these are all flags that would, could potentially harm our bond rating. So after all of the analysis from my perspective, you know, we need to, we need to stay with our tax rate of two twenty-five.
Other comments?
Oh, just be brief. I spoke at Solomon County Commission, and they are said that nobody likes taxes, but most of us like what taxes can get us. And I think we've seen tonight, Certified Police Department Fire just got accredited. We are able to pay for fantastic professionals in our city. Our school system, we're very proud of. So our taxes here in Bristol get us a lot. The other thing I said is that it is very complicated, and it's gotten a little more complicated. I want to thank the, our Tara Music and our finance staff for working with us. I forget how many years ago, maybe six or eight years ago, for the first time we modeled. We used Microsoft Excel and were able to model out years in advance with touches of the keyboard and to put in a tax rate and see where that got us on our reserve funds and some of the other projects we have. And that's what we spend a lot of time doing, looking at that model and really appreciate the ability to be able to do that. For me, that helps a whole lot to be able to do that. I've been on city council a long time. Our city has changed considerably in the time that I've been on, very excitingly for the biggest part. Through all the progress with development, through our economic hardship during the downturn that we're still making up for some lost time when we were very frugal. I believe Bristol has been fiscally responsible and also very fiscally conservative in the decisions that we make. I think we're in a good place. I think we've got more great things to do and places to go, and I want to keep up the momentum. And I think to do that, we need a little bit of step up from our citizens with our tax rate to maintain and to move forward. So that's why I support the two twenty-five. Thank you.
Our growth rate for Bristol is very low, approximately one percent. But our budget rate increase is much higher than what we're expecting our growth to be. So that automatically puts us in a deficit situation. Personally, in operating a business, you can't, you can't function like that. If you can either increase your income or you can decrease your expenditure. But it has to be one or the other. We're not like government. We can't just raise taxes and demand more money. Our city's written mission statement is that we will not be dependent upon property rate, property tax rate increases, that we will look to other sources of income. Four years ago, we were in a very similar situation. We did not raise property tax rates, but we looked to other ways to increase revenues. And we were very successful in doing that. We stuck to the city's mission statement. And we were able to raise our reserve fund to well over fifteen million dollars in that process. So at this time, we are not in dire straits that we need to raise property taxes. When it comes to tax incremental financing, I don't believe that the government should fund a project through that means and then spread the cost to all property owners. We can look at other means of raising revenue for that and also for our school system. Our equalized tax rate is two dollars and sixteen cents, and I do not support raising property taxes nine cents to the two dollars and twenty-five cents. I believe that the money should stay with the property owners. We do not need to raise taxes at this time, and we should stick to our city's mission statement and not depend so heavily on property rate, property tax rate increases. There's other ways that we can do that, and that is our job and duty to indeed look for other sources of revenue and not continue to raise property tax rates. So I will not be supporting it.
The policy reads, "Efforts will be made to diversify the revenue base and reduce dependency, dependency on property taxes." It's exactly the way it reads. Another fundamental part of our policy is that for our general fund, the city will maintain a minimum fund balance equal to three months, at least three months, of total appropriated general fund expenditures and transfers. A target fund balance is a minimum of four months. So we want at least four months. We sit right now at five months. The fact is, over the last four years, by keeping taxes low and helping businesses with TIF financing, we've expanded our revenue base, so much so that we've added three million dollars to our surplus funds. We now are sitting at around fifteen million dollars in surplus funds. We were at twelve million four years ago. It's fact. That's the history of it. When we talk about TIF financing, let's get to the real dollars. This year, our projection is that the TIF financing will cost us about two hundred and six thousand dollars. That was verified and is true by the state comptroller's office this morning. If the model holds exactly where it is, and it will not, because we are going to be doing more TIF financing, that two hundred and six thousand dollars would roll off in two to three years. Actually, to a deficit more like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when you get down to the real numbers, that's, that's the situation. But the numbers aren't going to stay the same. Within the TIF monies, it's going to be continuously fluctuating. And it is true with the reappraisal, it makes it, it makes it tougher. But it's going to cost us two hundred thousand dollars this year. So that's the real numbers. You know, our fundamental belief three, four years ago was that by keeping taxes as low as we can, the revenues would outpace expenditures. It would grow faster. And that's what's happened. That's exactly what's happened over the last four years. Projected revenues for budget two thousand eighteen are projected to increase at four point eight percent. Yet our projected expenses are going to increase at five point seven percent, outpacing our revenues. Now, that's not surprising, because sometimes we might have in a given year, maybe our expenses are three percent versus four point eight percent. And we do have a lot of expenses in this, in this particular budget year, with a new fire station and other things coming up. So it's, it's not unheard of. And we can model, we have modeled, gosh, we've spent how many hours modeling? As a matter of fact, we all stand up and model for everybody here. Why don't we do that? The problem with models is, is it's not, it's just a projection. We can take that same model, put different numbers in, and it comes out differently. So when it comes down to it for me, one of the main things that I would like to have seen was, in our meeting today, that we talked about the situation that our school system's in. Now, we have increased funding to the school system of about forty, let's round it off at fifty thousand dollars. We give to the school system every year two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital improvements. But we really didn't get into the meat of that, which I think is one of the most important things we could be getting into. And so it's really not addressed in this budget, except for about fifty thousand dollars. So for me, I think that we're going to be in really good shape for the next two years. If the model holds true and revenues don't expand as quickly as possible, it could be that we have to eat into some of our surplus funds. But it won't take anywhere close to four months. The other thing is too, is what if the economy continues to expand as it has been doing over the last four years? And revenues continuously, continually go up. Hopefully, our surpluses are going to go up. Hopefully, we'll be able to contain our expenses and move forward as we have over the last four years. So for me, our tax rate, our equalized tax rate of two sixteen is where I think we should be. And last, a month ago, one of the first things I said was, is we need to keep our tax rates as low as we possibly can because of business. Manufacturing in the United States, in our area, is more competitive than it's ever been. And by increasing expenses like taxes on those manufacturers, distribution centers, we are, we are not as competitive as another, another area might be. So that's my reasoning behind what, what this rate should be, and I think it should be at the two sixteen equalized rate.
Jack, I just have one bit of information that, with Chad talking about the taxes on our businesses. Eight hundred and sixty-seven of our commercial businesses saw their property tax appraisal decrease, and twenty-six of our industrial found their appraisal rates, values have decreased in this reappraisal. So we have, we have substantial, and five hundred and forty-eight commercial increased, which there's a differential there of almost three hundred more decreased than increased. And then we had thirty-three that increased and twenty-six that decreased. So we slightly more increased, but, but not significantly. Back to four years ago and how we've been able to do what we've been able to do, was we instituted a stormwater fee that helped bring our water and sewer funds revenue neutral so that we were no longer peter and pawing back and forth between those two funds. We also instituted a gate fee at Still's Creek, which has generated substantial revenues that have offset the bonds that were issued to double the nature center in size. Also, four years ago, when we were going through the reappraisal situation then, we did not have the differential of the TIFs on that reappraisal by any means that we have today. So I can appreciate the fact that, that we have come through. But I think that the point that, that we continue to miss is the, the impact that the TIFs are having on this certified tax rate. As the Department of Equalization told us as recently as today, that it is in fact a false positive to plan a tax rate based on the TIF financing coming back to us in real dollars, because it does not. That was the first thing. Also, the fact that we didn't have the TIFs that we had four years ago that we have today, and the fact that we have had property values to drop. I just, you know, the thing that, that I spend a lot of time in my professional life doing is assessing and mitigating risk. And I'm very hopeful too. I'm very hopeful for the future. But I also know that, that the literature that's coming across my desk in my professional life and it's talking about the economy and pension plans, and it's talking about the economy and where we stand, and it's talking about the difficulties facing bricks and mortar sales today. It's, it's not, it's not assuring that everything that we hope is actually out there on the horizon. So I think that we need to move cautiously again, and I just wanted to make those, those few notes so that, you know, that's taken into consideration.
I'll just say, imagine how much more competitive those manufacturers can be. How much better we look than another, than another community with lower property taxes. Jack, I'll let you.
I've, I've been across the board on this at different times, and I know last month I voted at the two twenty-five rate. My, the biggest thing that changed for me since our last meeting was understanding how we were going to get the school financing through that maintenance of effort obligation. I see, as we walk through it, I had a, well, we've talked about it a couple of times now. I see where we've now found a way, we'll have to change some appropriations and some things like that. And there might be a couple of things that we just fund differently based on how they're currently set up on, on the line items for our budget. The, I'm not, I'm not concerned as much with the TIF amount, because it's about a two hundred thousand dollar gap. And we knew that there was going to be some growth. It just didn't all come in as, well, we'll see how it comes in, you know. Chad raises a good point. It's, these projections are what, in industry, we would typically sit down and do LVE, latest best estimate, estimate, projections, you know. So we're, we're making the most informed decision we can based on what we've got. And I want to clarify one point with what Councilwoman Rine mentioned. Our TIFs, they end up, they're completely funded, at least the gap is funded by the differential in the tax increment, that base amount versus what they've invested. So if they, meaning how much property tax would be. So if there's a shortfall, that does fall to the, to the developer to make up. It's, they're complicated and they're challenging to understand. And that's part of the reason why with TIFs, we really appreciate when there's a, a, not just a property tax element to them, there's the sales tax part, or there's jobs that mean economic impact, where people are there and, and, you know, using the nearby restaurants and, and the gas stations and everything else. As I walk through this though, I, I know at last meeting, I would have been very happy to have said, "Hey, you know, let's figure out a, some sort of middle ground." And I know we had, we need two twenty-five, we had, we need two sixteen. And I've kind of been in the middle of that and trying to figure out how we can go. And one of the things that Chad did today to help remind perspective is, you know, if we tinker with some of those growth rates, or whether it's on the revenue side or the expense side, it, it changes what expense side, it changes what those play out as, whether it's a 2%, a 1%, whatever the percent. The crux of the matter to me, I feel like what we've got gets us almost every, if we kept it at 216, I think we can get almost everything we need. We might have to go back and appropriate some things differently from the 216. My concern is where we end up with fund balance. But on the 225, I feel like there's some additional, and for me, the Improve Act and the Hall Income Tax Parts, I know the state's working to make us whole on some things as Hall Income Tax goes away. To me, those, at least for the first couple of years, wash out. I don't want to be in a situation where we're essentially double dipping for a couple of years. We have some challenges, but I don't think there's an interest in a middle ground. And I think between the two, I have to, I have to move to the 216 number, but it does mean some changes of what we might have to appropriate.
Call for the question. No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Somebody ask a second.
That requires a second and a majority vote.
Second, I'll call for the question. Correct?
Yes.
I'll second. Call for the question.
Requires a majority vote.
All right. Call for the question. We need a roll call vote for the question.
Okay. Councilman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers? Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farah Robin?
Sure. Let's call for the question.
Yep.
Right. Yes.
So, now we can have the vote. So, Tara, will you please call the roll for the?
So, ordinance 17-4, property tax rate at 225.
At 225?
That's what the motion on the table is.
Okay.
And the second.
All right.
Councilman King?
No.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
No.
Councilwoman Rennie?
No.
Vice Mayor Farah Robin?
Um, yes.
All right. So, we have a motion that has not passed. Is there an additional motion?
Motion to put the tax rate at 216.
Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss the ordinance as revised at 216?
Can we go for a middle ground?
I think we ought to vote at 216, I believe.
Unless...
You could make an amendment to the motion.
Can I make an amendment? I move to amend to set the tax rate at 220. Second.
Now, we have to accept...
You would have to vote on the motion to amend to set the tax rate at 220. If that passes, then you would go back and vote on the full motion.
Can you pull the microphone down?
I apologize. Currently, there's a motion to amend, Councilman King's motion to set the tax rate at 216, and the motion to amend is to put it at 220. That has a second. You would have to vote on that amendment, and if that gets a majority, then the revised motion would be to have the tax rate set at 220. If it does not pass, if it does not get three votes, then you would have Councilman King's original motion of 216 still to be voted on.
Okay. Discussion before we, we've got a motion to amend at 220, and that was seconded by Councilwoman Powers. All right. Discussion?
The one thing I didn't say, that I've said at work sessions, are that, for me, I believe for economic development, it is not just our tax rate, that it's a whole lot of quality of life, it's what our community looks like, it's what kind of services we provide, that a whole lot goes into a decision for a company to expand, for a company to come here. And I think we're headed in the right direction, but we also have some areas where we're not keeping up with our tri-cities or other competitors that we have, and that's why I think it's important to look beyond just the tax rate.
Government's job is to provide essential services. We have, we've had an abundance of monies available. We've spent monies on things like branding, lots of studies for different things. With that amount of monies available, I do not feel comfortable raising property taxes. Again, our mission statement is to stay away from the dependence on property taxes, to look to other ways. If we have money to spend on things like branding, et cetera, we do not need to be raising property taxes. We need to cut more fat from the meat.
My thought is, you know, at 220, while it's not the certified tax rate, I believe that it is a fair compromise. It is a reduction of the tax rate over where it has been at 225, if we go to 220. You know, we've talked a little bit about education. We know that if we, we can reallocate within our budget, but where we have said that that money would come from is that we would just rename our capital improvement fund to the school systems of $250,000, and we would shift that now to help to cover our maintenance of effort. And I think that's unfortunate, because the loser in all of this is education. And additionally, with the county needing to take the action that it took, that was another $670,000 that's already embedded in our school system's tax rate. And Chad, I understand what you were saying, that, you know, if we did that, if we took from the capital fund of $250,000 and pulled money from other resources, that we could do that over the next five to six years and equalize that, and that we would not increase our maintenance of effort over that period of time, your suggestion, so that we would be equalized in that manner. Right now, our school system is looking at a shortfall of just a little over $1 million, and they have their budget in place. We, you know, we know that economic development, we can talk about branding as part of economic development, we can talk about all these studies that we have done, and if memory serves me correctly, we all voted for those studies and were very enthusiastic about them. But economic development begins with our workforce. And I know you've been very concerned about our ongoing workforce and that it is a ready workforce. And with the cuts that our school system is now going to have to make, and with the reallocation within our budget that we talked about today to cover that maintenance of the effort without actually really delivering that maintenance of effort, I think it's in very poor form for us to not try to reach some place of compromise in all of this. I think 220 would be a point of compromise. We had talked about that earlier in this whole process, and I certainly had an appetite for it at that point, and I would have an appetite for it now. I still contend that 216 is just cutting it too close.
Hearing no further discussion. You're ready for the vote? Will you please call the roll? And this is...
Yeah.
I know you, before we do that, let me clarify. Are we good? I saw you working through Robert Tools there, making sure.
To clarify, you're voting now on the question of whether the Councilman King's motion should be amended to read, setting the tax rate at 220 instead of 216.
So, we're actually voting for a tax rate of 220 through amendment?
You're voting to amend the main motion?
Okay.
And then, you will have to vote again on the main motion if you accept the amendment or if you approve the amendment.
So, I'm going to say one more time...
This vote is on 220 rate.
This vote is to amend the main motion to 220. If it succeeds, then you would vote on the main motion. If it fails, then the main motion is still at 216.
Okay. Do we follow? So...
Let's do one and then clarify for the next one.
This amendment is to, Councilman King's motion to 220. Will you please call the roll?
Councilman King?
No.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
No.
Councilwoman Rennie?
No.
Vice Mayor Farah Robin?
Yes.
So, the motion does not pass, the amendment does not pass, so we're back to the motion with the second of 216 by Mr. King and second by Ms. Rennie.
I have a question, just for Danielle to make sure I understand this, this is stupid. Since the rate's 216.12, is it 216 or 216.12?
The motion is for 216.
216.
Should we amend it to the equalization rate of 2.1612?
That's up to you.
I'm looking to council, I'm looking to council.
That's probably worth a few pennies.
I make a motion to go with the certified property tax rate of $2, 2.1612.
Let me ask, before there's a second, as a, just a matter of procedure, because we have the original motion...
You're still amending the main motion.
But since she's one who made the second, we can't just accept or reject through the person who provided the motion? Does that make sense?
Councilwoman Rennie's made a motion to amend, and so, if she needs, if that gets a second, then you would vote on that. If it doesn't get a second, then you're back to...
All right. So, we have a motion to go to the equalized rate, which is reflected up on our ordinance of 2.1612. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right. So, we have a second discussion. All right. Hearing none, we're ready to call the roll for the amendment of 2.1612, the equalized rate. Ready to call the roll, Tara?
Councilman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
No.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farah Robin?
No.
All right. Now, we are to, that motion passes to amend Mr. King's original motion to an equalized property tax rate of 2.1612. Discussion on that original motion with the amendment of 2.1612. I know I've got a couple of people at the end of the table who will help keep us straight on, if I'm getting those things twisted around. You all right? Okay. All right. Hearing no further discussion, we're ready for the vote.
Hold one second.
Okay.
What are we doing now? We're voting on what?
We are voting on the rate of 2.1612.
Okay. Got you.
Current, that's the current motion as it's in second in form.
Okay.
And been amended. All right. Ready?
Yes.
All right. Roll call.
Councilman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
No.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Farah Robin?
No.
All right. Next, we have Resolution 1797, authorizing the use of eminent domain to acquire real property to construct road improvements at Pinnacle Parkway and US 11W. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter to the public?
Yes, Mayor, this matter was before council last month, and you deferred action to bring it back at our September meeting. As you may recall, earlier this year, a cost share agreement with Pinnacle Partners LLC was approved for the extension of Pinnacle Parkway to serve properties located south of the 11W-Pinnacle Parkway intersection. This roadway extension is necessary to access the new fire station number five, as well as future commercial development on the southwest corner of the intersection. Resolution 1797 authorizes the use of eminent domain to acquire two parcels of property owned by Corolla Management Corporation necessary for the extension of the Parkway. The two parcels are located on the west side of the property. Parcel A has a, possesses 1,259 square feet. Parcel B has 820 square feet. Collectively, they have a market value, market-based appraisal of $21,000. In early February, staff met with the chief executive of American National University, which is the parent organization for national college, to discuss the property acquisition. The southern extension of the Parkway will require the realignment of the existing access drive to national college, as you see illustrated in the diagram that's displayed. There's been really little dialogue since that time. We brought this matter to you last month for consideration of the use of eminent domain powers. Now, and again, I would say that this is a tool that's in the box. This doesn't automatically trigger eminent domain. You may recall that earlier this year, you approved eminent domain proceedings for several properties on East Cedar Street. We were not required to use that tool in the box in acquiring the right of ways for any of those properties. To date, what has transpired, I guess what has transpired since we were last together, there's been one meeting with staff and a professional representing the college. This was an engineering professional, and they discussed the design. There is another meeting tomorrow with a representative of the college, as well as the engineering professionals from all three entities that will gather. As you may also recall, Pinnacle Partners LLC has committed to funding 100% of the road relocation and the cost associated with that. We'll continue to pursue a negotiated settlement of this issue until we feel like at a certain point, we've exhausted our pathway forward. And at that point, we would ask that we are authorized by resolution to move forward with eminent domain.
And recognize too, as was alluded to, we did vote to postpone this last month to this month, and I'd just like to point that out. It's not completely resolved, but we do have it before us. So, is there a motion? Well, first, is there questions of council or staff? All right. So, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 1797? One of the things I'd like to share, I think there has been a little progress, but as we talked last month, I felt much stronger that we should be farther along with this than we are. And I know this is probably going to put things mostly into next season, next building season. That concerns me, and I have good faith that we'll be able to resolve things without eminent domain, but I do think it's important that we get that resolved so that it can be started as quickly as it needs to, and we have that tool ready for staff to use should it be necessary. If there's no further discussion, I believe we're ready for the vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Councilman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farah Robin?
Yes.
All right. This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have several minutes to be considered this evening. Minutes from our August 1 city council meeting, minutes from our August 10 call city council meeting, minutes from our August 22 city council work session, minutes from our August 28 city call city council meeting, minutes from our August 29 call city council meeting. Resolution 1799, a resolution adopting a boards and commissions manual. Resolution 17100, a resolution authorizing the purchase of an emergency warning siren. Resolution 17101, a resolution authorizing the city of Bristol to participate in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program. Resolution 17102, a resolution authorizing the purchase of breathing apparatus cascade system for the fire department. Resolution 17103, a resolution authorizing emergency repair of a transit bus engine. And Resolution 17104, a resolution amending a contract for engineering services for a water filtration plant motor control center upgrade.
All right. Any member of council like an item removed from the agenda on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve the items.
Move to approve.
Second. Second for Mr. King. All right. Tara, please call the roll.
Councilman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farah Robin?
Yes.
All right. Looking for my other sheet here. We did have a visit from Dr. Lilly. Our Board of Education liaison report is also now, so if you'd like to come back, you can visit us on another part other than your presentation. your presentation earlier.
Sure. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to welcome our new Board of Education member, Mr. Derek Linkus, and the board and I look forward to working with Mr. Linkus. In fact, I'd like to thank all of the great candidates who applied. We certainly had a great group of civically minded, service oriented folks who, who have a passion for helping children, so, so we appreciate that, we appreciate you for asking the Board of Education for input prior to, to developing the selection process, and of course, for making the selection, which was certainly no easy task to do, so thank you for that. In other news, our high school end of course scores just recently came back, and in a statewide webinar call with the education commissioner last week, she recognized us as one of five districts in the state with the highest gains over last year's testing. So we're still diving into those results, but so far they were pretty encouraging, so we're pleased about that. Like many others, our hearts go out to all those in Houston who've had to deal with Hurricane Harvey, and our Save the Planet Club, Advanced Middle School, is working to do something about that. They actually are organizing a system-wide relief effort, and they plan to send supplies to Texas on a tractor trailer, and they're working with the Red Cross really to determine what, what supplies are needed most, so you'll be hearing more about that, I'm sure. And finally, our VT game is this coming Friday, it's at seven thirty, this year it is, at the Bearcat, Bearcat Stadium, but look forward to seeing you there, and go Vikings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is our city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to, as is typically accustomed in September, I'd like to congratulate our staff, certainly Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Police and Fire, for successful management of the night race. And I know you're very familiar with, with what goes into this event and the advanced preparation. Certainly, it's a big event from Wednesday all the way through everyone leaving on Sunday, but it was, it was a strong event, I think it was, I think it was a very good event for Bristol Motor Speedway and the city of Bristol. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Tom Anderson and the work through his Economic Development Group for the red carpet, the fourth annual red carpet event, and this is where the city partners with Kingsport Economic Development and Networks and, and others in the area to host site consultants, and for a weekend of, of getting to know us, the, the features that, that this community, as well as Sullivan County and the city Kingsport have to offer for business opportunities, and, and many of the leads that, that we see in terms of business prospects come from site consultants, and the opportunity to, to have them in for this weekend is, is important, and it's served us well previously. We obviously look forward to the Rhythm and Roots reunion September fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. You know, I'd like to congratulate everyone in this community that's involved in that, it's, it's really turned into a premier event, and certainly puts this community on the map. And then lastly, a reminder of our work session on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth.
One question, do we, have we set a date yet for joining our school board members for the last event with our consultants?
No, we have, I know we have not, and then Dr. Lilly and I had a brief conversation about that earlier today. Certainly, we wanted to get the new school board member on board, and, and now that that's done this evening, we hope to have that scheduled before the end of this month.
Agreed.
And obviously, that we have consultants that, that are coming in, so we'll have to accommodate their, their schedules also.
And I'm sure he will be drinking from a fire hydrant, as some of us have in the past, so, thank you. Alright, city council comments?
I just want to say cheers to several, several different people, starting with Sergeant Cousins. I'm a firm believer that unless you feel something, it's really hard to know and understand and appreciate, and I had an understanding of, of what our police and fire and first responders, what they did, but I really, truly did not understand that until my son joined the military and, and went to Afghanistan. And when your heart is with somebody that's putting their life on the line, all of a sudden, it becomes crystal clear what these people do in their daily jobs, and some of the words that, I was trying to think how to describe all the emotions I was feeling for Sergeant Cousins, and some of the things that came up were sacrifice, courage, honor, duty, service, and, and coming from a heart of love, even though they are putting their lives on the line to protect us, their job is often misunderstood. And as represented in the situation where he was honored, hated, hated to the point of somebody wanting to take his life. So, from, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say cheers, and thank you to the police and fire and all the first responders and everybody that puts their lives, on the lives for all of our citizens, thank you, from the bottom of my heart. Also cheers to the Junior League, I love their little free library, it's awesome that they won that project, it's awesome that the Boy Scouts are volunteering to build, and that they're, it's a win-win, win-win-win situation for everybody. I can't say enough about education, getting an education has really changed my life for the better. Reading is a big part of that, and when you take personal responsibility to educate yourself, and as we saw in the scores from the school system, it's the great equalizer. There's really no excuses. We can't force anyone to become educated, it's really something individual has to take on for themselves, it is their personal responsibility. And the, and the results and the rewards of that will not only be, they will not only reap it themselves, but their whole family will benefit from their ability to make better quality life decisions. I wanted to give cheers to the school board for their forward thinking in requiring the AP exams. I didn't appreciate it at the time when that became a recommendation and we had to fork out money for it, but as the test results show, when they have to take the tests, it makes a huge difference in the results, so thank you to the school board for that. And, and finally, the, the last cheer is to the city council and to our citizens in keeping the property tax rate low, that is a huge selling point, that's a huge economic development come to Bristol. Our property tax rates are low, that's going to keep more dollars in the hands of the people that earn it, they will be able to choose how to spend that money. And I just want to say that I'm really proud of, of the process that we've all been through, it's been, it's been quite the process, we've, we've spent a lot of time, we've looked at it from a lot of different angles, and I really appreciate each and every one of, of your all's efforts and, and work that's, that's gone into this, and of course, it really all falls on city employees to do the work. We do a lot of debating, we do a lot of visioning, but the work is, is truly carried out by the city manager and all the city employees, so thank you very much.
I could ditto on some of the, our safety folks, Shining Police Department, Matt Cousins, also Fire Department, and just real proud to have been there with y'all, and proud of what you do. Also, the relationships are really important, and didn't get a chance to say while Commissioner Mark Vance was here, but we've been talking about meeting with our commissioners and talking through, and also looking at the financial models and helping to learn together as well as break bread together at the same time, so hopefully we'll follow through with that in the not-so-far future. Also, just a little PR for Loft Tours are this Saturday, I believe in Bristol's, from twelve to four. The Hiring Expo, I believe, is September twenty-first, and we are really proud of what happens with that, and our staff that has really worked hard to make that a great event. Also, would encourage everybody, I believe the comprehensive plan is online with a survey, is that correct? And also encourage people, there's a little activity called Plan on a Page, and I think that's probably online as well, our, our community development, that with a small group, you can spend a few minutes and collect people's ideas, and it's a great way to, to give feedback. And also, Plan Ahead Wildlife Weekend, the ribbon cutting for the nature center is, the weekend is thirteenth, fourteenth, I think the ribbon cutting's going to be on the thirteenth, so, October, yes, October, my husband would kill me if it were September, so...
Other comments?
Okay, I, I appreciate the discussion, I do, I think, and what I appreciate more than anything is, we can disagree without being disagreeable. And two different perspectives. What I would like to, for us to think about between now and our next work session is the situation that our school system's in. We know that there is a legal amount of money that we must cover, it sounds like, unless, unless there's something legally we can do differently. I'd like to see if we can discuss that at our next work session. Originally in our budget, we had about two hundred thousand dollars budgeted for SBK. And I'd like us to think about putting that towards, towards our maintenance effort for the, for the school system. We're putting about forty-eight thousand dollars, I think, in additional money that's currently in our budget, but we'd originally projected that, just something to think about, that gets us about a two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of our current monies towards their budget situation. In other ways, I would encourage staff to, to look at other ways, we may be able to make that up, but that's one thing that, that comes to mind, and if we can give it a few minutes, if we have an absolutely packed agenda, we can wait a month, but it'd be nice if we could tackle that. That's it.
I guess what I'd like to say is, you know, there's so many good things going on in Bristol, and we have a lot to be very proud of, and it would not be possible without our staff. So first and foremost, I apologize to our staff that you are now placed in a position where you will have to look very, even more closely at your budgets to see what in fact you can take out of those budgets. One thing that I was very hopeful for this year was that there would be some relief for our administrative staff, realizing that their salaries are not in line, they are less than others across the region, and we have such a talented staff. And we did do the study, and I know, you know, we all agreed to do the study because we recognized the fact that we wanted to be sure that our staff's compensations were in line with others regionally, and for that, I apologize. I apologize to the school system, it's been a rough week, when you consider that last Thursday, our school system was told that unfortunately, the county would not be able to provide the six hundred seventy thousand sixty-four dollars that they had put into their budget because of a settlement with the sheriff's lawsuit, and now you're sitting here tonight, hearing that three hundred and eighty thousand seventy-six dollars is not readily available unless we move monies around, and so I apologize to the school system, because you work continuously, and I know that, that we've got a middle school to build, and we know on the heels of the middle school, we know that there need to be renovations and other structural building things taking on, and, and I agree with Councilman Keen, we can agree to be disagreeable, we can agree to disagree without being disagreeable, and we will, we'll move on from tonight, and, and we'll, we'll move right on. I would be remiss to say that based on our tax rate, while the state certified our tax rate at the two point one six one two, it is not reflected in real revenue dollars, and in essence, we have cut nonsense out of our former tax rate, which means we have cut five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars tonight, first and foremost. Now, we can move things around, and hopefully, sales tax revenues will come in higher than expected, but the reality is, is that we have made a big cut tonight. I think, you know, we're very fortunate to, to live in the community that we live in, and to have the support that we have. Next weekend with Rhythm and Roots, I hope everyone will get out and enjoy Bristol Rhythm and Roots. Our ticket sales are ahead this year over what they were last year, year-to-date, and so we're real excited about that. I'm just very appreciative of the opportunity to serve on city council, and, and thank you all.
I forgot to take the time earlier to recognize, but we had former Mayor Staten join us tonight, of course, you heard from Commissioner Vance, and we also have our election administrator who's, who's been with us this evening, Mr. Bueller, and then also from our Bristol Housing Authority, Mr. Seifers has been here. So thank you all for, folks who serve in, in different roles, and, or have served in different roles in a public matter, thank you, and thank you for joining us tonight. One thing I'd like to share, I know that our city manager recognized Mr. Anderson, but in a, in something that mostly circulates through a town and city journal or magazine is a, is a great feature, there's an article titled Tennessee Cities Lead by Example to Encourage Economic Investment. And a couple of our local folks were, were cited in it, and Mr. Anderson was one of those, and it, it demonstrates how much activity is happening within cities, and how we are some of those economic engines of the communities, in, in contrast to how some of it plays out, when you look at where a business locates, oftentimes, it's, it's in a city more than it is a county. But it's very important to understand that those things, the way we work with it is through a great cooperation through both our county partners, known as networks primarily, and then a number of those other partners, whether it's folks at the state, or TVA, or even in some of the parts outside of our immediate vicinity with AEP. Of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention BTS and what they do with us as well. So all of the, all of that cooperation coming together helps with those city opportunities, because it, it can't happen by just the, the solo act, it's got to be a, a cooperation. And two of those that we have happening, that things are beginning to get moving as grant monies have been approved, is the Bristol Business Park, though that will be, part of that will be flattening out for a large facility to be able to be put up as a pad-ready site, meaning it will be flat and somebody can see it and say, yes, this is exactly what I need, it's got all the utilities I need, and then they can say, yes, let's do it. Right now, it's got too much topography for somebody to say, yeah, it's ready. Flattening that out makes it ready, it makes, and then we have Aerospace Park, which is a runway access, that's getting flattened out, a little bit at a time right now, but the big pieces of that will be coming, and we anticipate a, a great, great grant opportunity through the state. Those are opportunities that help us, not just in Bristol, but in the region, with good manufacturing or distribution-related jobs, aviation-type jobs, especially there on the runway. So there are great opportunities, and, and it's even led us to have some of those conversations to say, you know, networks, what do we need to start looking at, or when do we need to start looking at additional property that might be suitable for industrial development one day? So those are a couple of features, and, and I, I share those two because as I was talking with a couple of different groups, I realized there wasn't some of the awareness of some of those things that were quietly moving along, and I just wanted to share those, that these are significant, and, and the state has pitched in to help them, and we have a great city, we've got some great opportunity, and we need to make... city, we've got some great opportunity, and we need to make sure that we're capitalizing on it, and celebrate those times when we get the win, or the hey, look, you know, let's get this done. So, be safe, I thank our police and fire for helping to keep us that way, and look forward to seeing you at our next council meeting in October, believe it or not.